Okay, thanks everybody for coming. Okay, thanks everybody for coming. The Board convened in executive session prior to this meeting to discuss the superintendent's evaluation. And here we are, we've taken our pledge. So I'll just start by saying if you're watching this live and you have not voted yet, you should leave your house right now. Come to the Haldane Cafeteria, the polls are open until 9:00 PM. And you can vote on our budget and for the school board trustee candidates. The next Board of Education meeting will be held on June 1st at 7:00 PM, right here in the auditorium. And I didn't appoint Ann yet, I'm sorry. And before I turn it over to Dr. Benante, I'm going to appoint Ms., I'd like to appoint Ms. Andinio as our clerk pro tem since our regular district clerk is manning the polls. So, the recommended action, be it resolved that in the absence of the district clerk, the Board of Education hereby appoints business manager Ms. Andinio to serve as clerk pro tem for the meeting in order for District Clerk Ms. Catherine Platt to facilitate the vote. May I have a motion please?
No.
Any discussion? Thank you, Ann, all those in favor.
Aye.
Okay, so Ann is in charge. And I will turn it, oh, go ahead. What did you say?
President Daley.
Oh, here.
Vice President Hedlund.
Here.
Trustee Clemmons.
Here.
Trustee McNell.
Here.
Trustee Parr.
Here.
Thank you. And now I will turn it over to Dr. Benante for his update.
Thank you, Ms. Daley. Just two or three updates from me this evening, welcome everyone. Rather late evening, but for good reason tonight. I had the opportunity to attend two events last week that I think represent silver linings in what's been a unique and at times difficult year, but demonstrate how our community is continuing to adapt to new circumstances. The first was the middle school and high school music showcase, which was a wonderful performance. I know Mr. Hedlund was there Friday evening. We had a beautiful night for some live music on campus. And I'd like to thank Mr. McGrarty, Ms. Stein, Mr. Davidson, and Mr. Huland for their work with our students. They put on a wonderful show. And I think we all had a lot of fun who had the opportunity, those of us who had the opportunity to attend. Second, it was actually prior to that event, but was going all weekend long, the school foundation had a geocaching event at several locations, three different locations in the area. I had the opportunity to attend with Mrs. Sniffen at the West Point Foundry Preserve. So we geo-cashed for an hour or so and made our way around. And it was a wonderful way, one, just to get outside on a beautiful day, become a bit more familiar with the Foundry Preserve. I think we saw a bald eagle even at one point, which was great, and participate in a really fun event that obviously supports programs at our school. So, two great events, thank you to those who were involved. I know there's many others, the Arts Alliance, and there's many others who I, who are working behind the scenes to make those events go off. I think they went off wonderfully and hopefully our kids had a lot of fun as well. And last, just a reminder for our community that with the CDC's recent update to mask guidance, once again, it creates some confusion for us locally. And a reminder that when the CDC releases updated guidance like they did with respect to masks, the New York State Department of Health has to sit with that information or the governor for a period of the time and determine what the implications are for New York. And Governor Cuomo has spoken about that just recently, but there's always going to be a delay or gap between what the CDC announces and what our state decides to do. That being said, masks are still required and going to still be required on school grounds. So that's just a notice to our, for all of us who are here or watching. We'll also put a communication out tomorrow to our families. We are seeing a lot of questions regarding that. But for now, masks are still required on school grounds and will be for the foreseeable future. Jen, that concludes my remarks. I'll have more to say later after we have the results.
Okay, any communication from the public at this time? Public is all at the voting booths, that's why they're not here. Information reports, Ms. Jamin.
Good evening. My report tonight highlighted what we've been doing as an elementary school to welcome our newest elementary students, our kindergartners for next year into the community and help them adjust even under current circumstances, but get familiar with the building and the campus and their future teachers so that they're comfortable when they arrive in September. And also to celebrate our fifth graders. Two events that I have done since that report was written last week that I would like to highlight, our fifth graders have been working on an authentic learning project over the past month to combine both the impact humans have on our environment and their engineering standards into designing some wildlife locations on campus to improve campus and make it more sustainable and eco-friendly. So I was able to sit in on presentations yesterday and today, and then some tomorrow, where they are presenting their engineered designs to improve the campus. And some of them will get funded and some of them will not. And we will hopefully have by the end of the year, some engineered projects that I'll be able to share with you. And our fourth graders had me serve as president to hear their bills and decide which ones I will be signing into law to improve both recess and our extended learning time, which is part of our elementary school where they get to pursue their passion projects. So I was able to sit in on the projects they had voted to become bills that went to the president. And we will be holding some hearings to determine which of those will or will not become signed bills and laws at the elementary school, including whether or not I will be having hall monitors who will enforce social distancing and mask wearing with badges and radios that they've designed. Or whether we're going to have a sanitation protocol for balls so that they can have some more games like they do at PE at recess. So they are very, they have very ingenious ideas and ways to bring them to fruition, which are amazing to see and to listen to. So it's been a good, it's been a good week at the elementary school with problem solving.
Thank you.
Hey, Ms. Daley, just a quick question before we go.
Yes.
With incoming kindergartners at 41, are you at two classes? Are you at flex or not sure?
At three probably.
Very common.
You know, I looked back at our historical data and we usually have some students that register and attend the incoming events and then don't attend in the fall. Either their parents decide, you know, they might be right on the cusp of our cutoff date and they'll decide to hold them a year or enroll them in one of the local private kindergartens. Last year, we had the most of those. I think we had seven or eight last year that didn't, that didn't come, but that was the most, years prior, looking back, we had more like two or three. So it's just a year where, will it be more like last year or will it be more like a typical year? In talking to the families as they, because the students came in for kindergarten screenings, so they spent some time on campus and talking to the families, it seems like most of them intend to, you know, that their, their true enrollments and that they're coming. So then I would anticipate three. It's also been an interesting year, just with families moving, where last year, you know, my first year, we had maybe four new students over the whole course of the year, whereas last year we had 15 between August 15th and September 15th. So again, with the real estate the way it is, I just don't know where that'll end up. But I, I'm leaning towards it's going to end up falling at three.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Silke.
Good evening, everyone. I'm happy to be here tonight on this exciting night. Budget vote night is always exciting. I would like to highlight from the report, the last item, because the project is happening tomorrow for the, from the Learning Differences Committee. And I'd like to highlight the work of the sixth grade team and the Learning Differences Committee to bring a project each year to the sixth grade, to raise the sixth grade's awareness about learning differences. And this year, as I have mentioned previously, the project is based on the documentary Crip Camp. And tomorrow, the students will watch a, the students had an introductory activity yesterday, and tomorrow they'll watch an edited version of the documentary and have a question and answer period. And then on Monday, they'll have a grade level Zoom with the directors. And I just want to mention that what's not in the report is the tremendous amount of work that goes into making a learning experience like this for our students happen. So I was privileged to be able to sit in on the planning meetings, which were all done via Zoom with the leadership of the PTA's Learning Differences Committee and the sixth grade team. The tremendous amount of work and ingenuity it took for the PTA Learning Differences folks to edit the documentary, because it has, it has some adult themes. And in order to make it accessible and appropriate for sixth grade, a tremendous amount of time went into editing that work. And then the development of the discussion questions so that students can access the ideas and draw the symbolism of voice from the documentary. And then the graphic organizer that Ms. McCollum and Ms. Graham developed from those questions and the vocabulary list to pre-teach the sixth grader so that they have access to the vocabulary that they're going to see in the documentary. All of that wraps up into the experience that allows for our students to have a better understanding of what, of many different learning differences, this year specifically being disabilities, physical disabilities. So I just wanted to thank the sixth grade team and the Learning Differences Committee.
Thank you. Ms. Sniffen.
Good evening, everyone. Just one thing to highlight from my board report would be next Tuesday night is the academic awards night for Haldane High School, which will be taking place on the field this year. Lot of questions from the community about can we have guests and can we, we still at the high school are bound by the 200 people per outdoor event. So at this point, it will be aired on local live. We will have the link within our website, and then we will blast that link out to our families. So that's next Tuesday, the 25th. Two things not in my board report to highlight. The first is, this year's final exam schedule was sent out last week to families. And I just want to state that at our department chair level this year, we really thought about what is the value of a final exam in a year like this year or in a year like any year. And we came up with what I think represents what we believe and I hope to continue certain aspects of some of the things we take from a year in a global pandemic. One of the things we're doing in the math department this year is using the NWA as our final assessment to then during the week of Regents, really analyze that data and take a look at what are some things we want to focus on at the beginning of next year, what are some of the things we need to reevaluate, not just in our algebra and in our geometry classes, but in our Algebra II and in our Intro to Calc classes. Our English department is putting together an essay for the students to kind of benchmark and take a look at where are we with, within our writing as their, their final exam. The social studies has opted for some voice and choice and projects that they haven't felt they've gone as in-depth as in normal years they would like to. And the science department is a hybrid of projects, but they also have two Regents exams still and quite a few APs, and those would be used more in the final exam schedule. So I just wanted to take the moment to mention that. And our internships, which are off the ground and running, half of our students started on Monday with their internships, which is a little bit later than normal. And the rest of our students will be starting on June 1st, which is the window of after AP exams. Today, we did have our first digital AP exam at the REC Center, and it was smooth as smooth can be. And it was quiet over there, so that was nice. That's it, thank you.
Great, thank you. Ms. Rounds.
Good evening. So tonight, I wanted to talk about our graduating seniors, specifically our students with disabilities who have had IEPs here at Haldane. This time of year, as you know, our seniors are looking forward to graduation and embarking on a new chapter in their lives. The same is true of our students with IEPs, who many of them are finishing up vocational training programs and internships and going right into the world of work. And many of them are applying to colleges and getting accepted to colleges. And it's a, a very exciting time for all of our seniors. I did want to share an email that I received from a parent. This is a parent of a student who graduated from Haldane and also has a current senior in Haldane, both students who have IEPs. And she said, "I wanted to share some great news with you. My son has worked tremendously hard over the last two years, and he had applied to multiple reach schools for transfer, and he got into his top choice. He'll be in the economics program. This kid is so excited and we are so proud. This last year, even though he worked remotely from home, among multiple groups and clubs, he was the president of the accounting club as a sophomore and has spearheaded the project to do free taxes for people in need in the college's local community. And he has a 3.7 GPA. You have so much to be proud of at Haldane. You have prepared my boys to go out into the world and be successful. I can't thank you enough." And her other son, by the way, got accepted to his top choice college this year as well. So this is exciting news for us. We have graduates that are entering, as I said, the workforce and also those that have been accepted to colleges such as Sienna, Sacred Heart, Monroe College, and Duchess Community College. And it really shows that with a growth mindset, that our students are overcoming challenges and they're achieving their goals and they're achieving their dreams, and we're really proud of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Walsh.
Good evening. Dr. Benante, you earlier mentioned a music event that took place last week. The Facilities Department has spent a lot of time this path, this past month supporting all these events, whether it's through setup, breakdown, and custodial duties that take place. We make sure that the events go off hopefully without a hitch and that the school is prepared the next day for the return of students. The compressed athletic schedule, music events, plays, academic awards nights. Tonight, for example, there's six events tonight that are taking place, two home athletic events, two away, and then this board vote, or the board meeting and the budget vote. So we support all these events. So it's been a busy spring. We expect it to continue through the summer, which will be just as busy. As we look forward to capital, we have a kickoff meeting scheduled in June for the window project, so that can take place as soon as school ends. And then our electrical mechanical project is currently out to bid. Bids are scheduled to be received May 25th. So there'll be, hopefully we receive a bunch of bids that we can open up, review, and hopefully place up for award at the next board vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, busy, exciting times here at Haldane. Going into consent agenda minutes, may I have a motion please?
No.
These are the minutes from our May 4th business meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The health and safety committee minutes are here for anybody's review. Consent agenda financial, may I have a motion please?
No.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda personnel, may I have a motion please?
No.
Second.
Any discussions? Dr. Benante, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Ms. Daley. I wanted to mention that under recommended action for personnel includes the appointment of Dan Cowan as our new Director of Athletics, Health, PE, as well as our Dean of Students. Mr. Cowan went through an extensive review process, including meetings with students, meeting with our parents, meeting with our administrative team, our coaches, and came through as the success, he met with our Board of Education as well, came through as the successful candidate. I know that Dan wanted to be here with his family this evening. I advised him that he should wait until the next meeting just so we could all meet and introduce him, given that we were meeting a bit later tonight and there's a lot of other activity going on that I did not, I wanted to make sure that Dan had his own space to meet the board and also to express his appreciation for this opportunity. So I'll save some other things to share about Dan when we see him in a couple of weeks. But we're very happy to bring this process to closure. And also want to, I want to just reiterate my appreciation for Mr. Romanino, who's been a great help to us over these past few months. And it's a busy time, as you know, as Mr. Walsh was acknowledging, and we look forward to Dan being on campus in the coming weeks.
Yeah, and on behalf of the board, I'll just share that we're all super excited for Mr. Cohen to join us as well. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
There is no unfinished business, new business, the CSE CPSC recommendations. I'll turn it to Ms. Dino.
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the recommendations of the committees on special education and preschool special education as presented.
May I have a motion please?
No.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
This is the supplemental memorandum of agreement. I'll turn it over to Ms. Dino.
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves and ratifies the memorandum of agreement between the Haldane Board of Education and the Haldane Administrators Association dated May 7, 2021, regarding a new one-year successor agreement effective July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022, and authorizes the superintendent to sign the agreement on behalf of the district.
May I have a motion please?
No.
Any discussion?
Just wanted to thank Mrs. Sniffen, who serves as the president of the Haldane Administrators Association and her representation of the group, and also the time that she committed to the negotiations process, obviously among many other responsibilities in what is already a very busy school year. So I know when we go into these agreements, and I know this came up with the faculty last year, we don't, we desire longer-term agreements, so we don't, I think both parties do, but given the time and given everything going on, I appreciate the administration's commitment to a one-year agreement, and we'll be back at the table soon.
Yes, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, door hardening, Ms. Dino.
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby authorizes district employees to cover door vision panels when necessary to ensure an adequate safe zone within school buildings in the event of an emergency, and to temporarily block doors to slow the access of an intruder in an emergency so long as the means used to block the door do not require any special information or ability to allow egress, so that occupants can leave the building quickly in such circumstances.
May I have a motion please?
No.
Dr. Benante, do you have anything you'd like to share?
I'll just, I'll try to summarize that. The building code does not allow for windows to be covered and doorways to be blocked. However, the New York State Department of Education allows for such to occur in unique circumstances or emergencies. Al Terris, our safety and security consultant, has recommended that we adopt this resolution just as a more formal gesture on the board's behalf to endorse what may be necessary in the event of an emergency, should our educators choose to take those actions.
Are you going to provide them with something or it's just whatever works at the moment?
So with respect to the, it is whatever works in the moment. I think we'll, we'll get at that, yeah. The, the door blockage, again, is definitely that. Obviously, there's things in a classroom that one can use to put in front of a door. The window coverings is something that our teachers are, I would say, just upon observation, have things that they've already created to do so in the event of an emergency.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We are updating some of our election personnel. Ms. Dino.
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the updated resolution to appoint election personnel for the annual district meeting on May 18, 2021.
May I have a motion please?
No.
Second.
Any discussion? Thank you to all of these people working the vote downstairs. All in favor?
Aye.
We are going to skip number five and keep moving along. We'll come back since it is not nine o'clock yet. So is there any communication from the public? No. Board committee reports, policy committee update. I think we actually have something to update this round. It's very exciting. Go ahead, please.
So we received the most recent draft of our policy manual at long last. It's very exciting. Not as one would expect there, in the time since we sent it and in the time since we received it, there have been some recommended policy changes. So there are about six policies that require some review and update. Dr. Benante, President Daley and I are going to sit down and do that in one meeting in a couple of weeks. And then the next steps are, we will make those changes, those changes will be tracked in a Word document. The board will then adopt that policy manual and then send it back to Ari Bosse's for those changes to be incorporated. And here's the expected timeline for doing that. We're going to meet, we had, because of my work schedule, we actually have to, can't meet, and, and the holiday, we can't meet until June 4th, right? So at the next meeting, nothing will happen. And then at the second meeting in June, the plan will be for you all to see this policy manual for the first, right, it's like the 900-page policy manual, for the first read. And then our, our goal is that then at our reorg meeting on July...
It's not determined yet.
Yeah, something, first week in July. We would then have our second reading and adopt the manual. And then the plan is, I didn't come ready to do this, at the next meeting, I think the first thing is, is to find out sort of, well, what kind of review do you all want to do, right? It's this massive, massive document. The expectation is that you all have authorized the policy committee to do this review and to be putting forward to you a solid manual that meets all of our requirements. So the question is like, well, how much review do you want of like, what's, what's, what's happened, right? And, and there is one option, like if, to see, like to find out sort of what's the work that we have been doing. And that option would be for you to be able to review what are called, oh shoot, what are the name of this?
Customization chart?
Basically, the documentation, there's a name of the table, I can't remember it. But there's a huge table that lists all the policies and, and really indicates which policies have changed over the last couple of, of, of reviews. And it basically, it also indicates like, what are the, what are the required policies? And so to the extent that someone really wanted to get a sense of, well, what's the work that the policy committee has done, right? We could share that customization table, that's what it's called. We could share that table with you all to look at, and you could then sort of check those policies, we could, I don't, I don't know. I mean, it's, it's really up, there's a few, there's a few different ways we could go, right? I mean, to be quite honest, though, even we haven't read every single policy that's in the policy manual, right? The, the ongoing policy manual audit will start once we have our policy, our adopted policy manual, and then we'll be engaged in a more regular bringing in any new policies that Ari Bosse's is recommending, bringing those to the board, regularly just reviewing and going through the policies to make sure they're what we want them to be. So the question is, I don't expect you're going to read the entire policy manual before we adopt it. That's why we have Ari Bosse's, who's expert at putting this together for us, at doing the audit for us, that's why you have the policy committee. But what kind of information do you want, if any? of information do you want, if any, before we vote in six weeks? So you don't have to decide now. You could follow up with me in an email.
So they're coming in completely blind.
I don't think there would be anything -- that's a good point.
That is a good point.
I don't think that there would be anything that would preclude us from sharing it with an oncoming, incoming board member.
Typically, whoever's elected tonight, we typically, they're supposed to, I mean, they're not supposed to. The expectation is they are welcome to attend the meetings moving forward in a non-voting capacity.
That's right. And the information in the policy.
And I could certainly meet with them.
We could share that with anybody, quite honestly.
So that's something we can arrange for, Margaret. Thank you.
And learning, it means since policy is one of our primary objectives, it wouldn't be out of the ordinary for me to have a meeting with the newly elected member. I can meet with you too, John, if you wanted, to go over what this process has been, so that they know what they're doing, right? Because it's always a little weird to come in and vote, like your first meeting. It feels, you know. So anyway, so the, that's an update. And then the ask of you is to think about what kind of information would you like to have to feel comfortable voting to adopt the manual at the beginning of July? And if you feel like you need to talk a little bit more about what this process has looked like, reach out. You could get on Zoom. I could show you sort of some of the stuff we've done. But yeah.
Would I be correct in stating that the fundamental changes to the sort of set of policies that we had before and this kind of benchmark foundational launch have been changes in law, changes in policy, changes in -- there's, what we may have lost is any nuance that grew over our policies over years, which frankly, I'm not aware of. So I'm comfortable, if there hasn't been any sort of subjectivity layer put on this, then like, for me, it's just, I just need to get up to speed on the depth and like, what's covered and what's not and where might.
Yeah, there's no policy, you know, there's been no like subjective, philosophical, policy-changing.
Or tweaks for where this kind of.
No, none of that. It's all been very like perfunctory, changing of a title, change of law, things like that. There's been nothing of substance.
I think the more.
Not to diminish our work, but.
No, I get it.
Nothing of real substance.
I think the more interesting thing will be, I think you will be very interested in, what did we lose? What did we potentially lose? But I don't have that. I'll be more interested in how do we sequence what we start to look at next.
But so let's be, so let's, I don't think we lost necessarily anything, right? So that's one thing to keep in mind. So the policy audit, they started with the policy manual that was in existence, right? All of those policies. All of those policies are still there.
Yeah.
Unless there was some kind of law or other regulation that mandated that that policy be updated. So, and some of those we've actually even talked about, the big ones like the sexual harassment ones, a couple of other things we've actually even talked about. But like, some stuff, oh, changes in special education law, right? So a big emphasis on like response to intervention, like that's really changed. Like, that's a really important substantive update. But it's not like we lost any of our own unique policies that we had developed over time, like our fundraising policy, right? That's still there. Probably one we need to go back to. And there's certainly a list of things to do. But we didn't lose any policies.
That's a good, that's a good.
I'm interested in that list of things to do that you just referenced, is based on this audit, what are the things that, you know, we would need to bring to our attention once we get to the point at which we want to?
Yeah, so, yeah.
Not now, but I'm just saying that would be interesting.
Yeah, I mean, and going through it, like that list, it's actually in our last customization table. Like, there's some policies that aren't mandated, aren't required, that we have, that maybe, for example, the Erie Bosse's pointed out, like, this is like different than the policy we recommend for this, right? And so like, the fundraising policy, I think, is an example where we put that together to address some particular circumstances. The policy's kind of a hodgepodge. Like, that's probably something that we need to think about, right? The main to do moving forward will be for the committee to begin, am I going on too long about this? I don't think so.
We've got plenty of time.
Okay. It's for the committee to implement the practices that we've developed over this process, which is to stay up to date with the email, with the documentation and information and recommendations that we get for Erie Bosse's. Like, we've got a system in place for doing that, right? For us to, like, that's, that's the main thing. And we do have a customization chart where the last one, the last manual we went through, Jen and I made some notes of like, oh, we want to, let's start with these. There's a handful, and fundraising is one of them.
Yeah, anything of substance where it's really going to potentially change the school's approach to something or philosophy about something, that all has to come before the full board.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
For sure. There's a first reading, there's a second reading, there's a discussion, it's a whole thing. But the ones that have just been adjusted are the ones that are just.
Yeah, that's really, that's really the.
Editing, basically.
That's the work that has taken, that's the work that has taken place, is updating the existing policies to reflect current laws and regulations and recommendations. But everything's still there. Like, we didn't lose, it's not like they took away all the, all of our extra policies. They're all still there.
So we're actually moving forward with the policy.
I know.
It's very exciting.
It is really exciting.
Okay, so Westchester Pot, I don't really have an update. I think I gave you my last update of interest. But you guys have all gotten the email about their annual meeting. That's what everybody's really excited about right now. The annual meeting will be on Zoom if anyone wants to attend. And it is specifically about silver linings, right? So there's a real positive spin, right, trying to collect what has gone well during COVID that we'd like to continue moving forward. So the theme is silver linings, which I like. And that's it. That's what's going on there. And Village Parking Committee update. So I'll turn that to Dr. Benante and Margaret to share.
We are the committee.
You are the committee, too, to share any thoughts. And I know Mr. Walsh is in the audience as well.
Yes.
Has anything to pipe in, feel free.
First, I would like to thank Margaret for her time and expertise on this matter, which has been really invaluable in, as I've considered, the proposal and next steps forward. I've come to learn a lot more than I ever thought I would know about public parking, and Margaret has assured me I know nothing. I say that in jest. No, it's been, it's been enlightening, to say, to say the least. So Margaret and I met with a committee of stakeholders, Tim, we obviously included in that, as well as a few of our coaches, as well as community members who come to utilize the spaces around 9D, which mostly is the softball field there. And I'd also, I want to thank Mayor Morandi for getting this conversation started with us. I know it's something that the village has been working on for some time. And I appreciate Dave's time coming here, but he was also available via phone in between and leading up to our meeting. And I know would continue to make himself available to us if needed. The, I think what came through our detail meeting with the mayor was that the details around this matter are quite intricate and involved when it comes to parking in the village and residential zoning or permitting. And it also became very apparent that our community members in, with respect to their use of the parking area on 9D, when they heard about this, are entering in the, into the conversation with very different expectations. So we're coming into it with an interest, perhaps a financial interest, or at least that was my bias, could we potentially monetize and get revenue from individuals who are utilizing that park, that area as parking for when they access the trails or other spaces. But it was clear that some of our, that our residents experience some frustration at times for their inability to access that space through no fault of the school necessarily, but because that space is not monitored. And I don't know if by way of putting a, it was clear that by way of putting a, putting a system in place to monetize it, to have a, whether it be a kiosk or just a, you know, an opportunity for people to pay, or a requirement for people to pay, that wasn't going to resolve their concerns. That's the gist of it. And could potentially lead to more frustration now with the school, that we now, God forbid, they encounter it, now they have to pay for a spot, because they were able to get a spot, that in the past, they never had to pay for. And I think we would agree, they shouldn't have to pay for either if they're residents. So the management of all that seemed quite significant. Not to say that over the long term, it can't be done. I think there is opportunity there. But it would take a significant amount of time and energy to get the foundation of that in place to assure that we weren't creating unintended, as of now, unintended frustration or concern on the part of our community, where we do not need it. So my recommendation would be to hold for now. The village clearly is working on its plan for parking and metering parking in the village and the surrounding, not only Main Street, but the surrounding streets. That's going to have an impact. And there's a lot to that. I think we should wait, see how that plays out, and let that get established first, and then enter into a conversation about the use of our space for such. That just seems to be the best way to proceed at this point. And I'll turn to Margaret to see if there's anything.
You said it very well. I think, I think there is potential here, but I think the village needs to get the basis set up before we need to step into this. Otherwise, we could end up with a lot of frustrated people on our part, and I don't think, I don't think we want to be the front end of that.
Makes sense to me.
Me, too. And thank you again, Margaret. And I'd like to thank all the other individuals, both on the committee, and I was able to reach out to a few community members, just who I know, you know, are thinking about this, or come to intersect with this space, who are very giving of their time to me over the past week. So thank you. They know who they are. So thank you to all of them.
Great. Okay, is there any, are there any board reflections to share?
I have one. And I'm sorry, I didn't think about it last time. Earlier this month, it was Teacher Appreciation Week, and it just provided me with the opportunity to really stop and pause and think about how much I appreciated the teachers at Haldane that Peter had when he was growing up, and how, and really, even more importantly this year, how much I appreciate, really like, the Sisyphean work that our teachers have undertaken this, this year. Because I work at a company that does lots of kinds of research, but often education research, it's often, it's noted. And it is actually, it provides me with, I guess, somewhat selfishly, like, a really nice opportunity to reflect on some of the really fantastic teachers that Peter had while he was at Haldane. And so anyway, I wanted to acknowledge both. So thank you to all the teachers, current and past, at Haldane.
John, did you say you had something you wanted to share?
Yeah, I was going to give a shout out about the arts event, which was, I think, fantastic. And I solved a question for a local resident who wondered whether there was a garage band that practiced every Thursday. And I was like, it's the Blues Devils. Now figure that out. And I think one of the, I think we have a fantastic arts instructional corps, but I was really excited that Mr. Hulan, just his engagement with the students, and actually ran into one of them who now I recognize who works at Foodtown. I was like, you're the guy with the white guitar, right? And he's like, yes. And so we had a great conversation. And he was like, he's great. So just that engagement outside of what you do, and his love of that was fantastic.
Dr. Benante, anything you'd like to share?
I have some things to share a little later.
Okay. Well, it is 8:45. I know the board had thoughts of going back into executive session to just wrap up some evaluation thoughts and notes. So I think we're going to have time to do that. You know, the polls close at nine. I don't expect that we would really need to be back here till 9:15 earliest. So I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of discussing the superintendent's evaluation. May I have a second, please?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for your patience. The following results of the annual district meeting of May 18, 2021. Proposition one passed. The pass by 423 was the total, yes. 120 was no. Proposition two, it passed. 410 was yes. 131, no. The trustee election. John Hedlund received 368 votes. Mary Maggie Valentine, 355. And Mark Daisley, 253. There were a total of five write-ins. Thereby, John Hedlund and Mary Maggie Valentine will assume the open trustee positions of the Haldane Board of Education commencing July 1, 2021.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work. Thank you. Everyone, go. Thank you. And I've lost my agenda. Do I need to have her?
Yes, so you're looking at item five. She's just getting the call.
Okay, so the acceptance of the results of the annual district meeting, budget vote and trustee vote. Ms. Dineo.
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education hereby accepts the results of the annual district meeting, budget vote and trustee vote for Tuesday, May 18, 2021, as indicated.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion besides congratulations, John Hedlund and Maggie Valentine? We are looking forward to having you join us. And congratulations to Dr. Benante and Ms. Dineo for all of their work spearheading our budget that got passed. Very exciting. Dr. Benante, can I turn it to you?
Yeah, just a few remarks. Again, congratulations to John and also to Ms. Valentine. A lot of individuals come together to put together a budget and to support a budget ultimately. And obviously, the board's very aware of this. And at some point, if I haven't, I just want to express my appreciation for the board's work with the administration through the budget development process. Obviously, we go into it with the hopes that it's going to be supported by the community. And given the margin this evening, I think we did a good job of that. But also, our supporting organizations have also played a key role in helping to get out the vote effort over these last couple of weeks. So I just want to acknowledge and extend my appreciation to all of them, as well as Catherine Platt, who has been downstairs, I don't think she's up here yet, all day, and played a big role as our district clerk in getting the budget vote set up for our community with some particulars to work around. Megan Shields, my secretary, has also been very helpful, Tim, as he alluded to earlier, and his staff have been incredibly helpful over the course of the day. I had read today from a superintendent from Texas, David Vrunland, who had said that public education is the way in which a community tells its youngest and its most vulnerable that we care about you. And our school budget's an investment in Haldane and signifies our community's care for our children. And for that, I think we're all thankful. So, good news tonight. Thank you all. And Jen, I'll turn it back to you.
Congratulations to all of us. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. May I have a second, please?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.